Angelina, would you roll call for us, please?
Yvonne Dandis.
President.
Steven Minor.
Here.
All right.
Here.
Samara DiMartino.
Here.
Doc, it's not yet here, but he will be joining us soon.
Yes. Um, are we here in our meeting minutes of November 17th? So if we can ask someone.
Nineteen.
Or nineteen, I'm sorry, nineteen, okay.
I've reviewed the minutes of November 19th. I find them to be correct and would move that they be approved and accepted.
I second that.
Need to vote on it.
Roll call, vote.
I vote to approve.
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 Okay, the first item on our agenda tonight is PLZBA 2025-0058. It was 60 113th Street. That's going to be tabled for tonight as they have to go to planning first. So we just wanted to make that for the record. So that said, we'll skip that down to PLZBA 2025-00547, 421, 425 River Street. So someone here would like to approach the mic on that?
Hello, I'm Jeffrey Goldstone. I'm the architect of the project.
I'm Garrett Brown, the owner.
Are you asking for us to present?
Yes.
Yes, please.
We're requesting variances for two things that we propose on the project. One is the size of a single sign that faces west on fourth floor of to, I always have to check my addresses, of 417, which is a sign that's not visible from the street, but is visible from the bridge. And we're requesting, we're requesting that the sign be approved at 60 square feet, which I believe is a 12-foot increase over the 48 square feet that is allowed by the ordinance.
Do you have any pictures or anything?
I'm sorry, I didn't come prepared with photos. I, I have the documents that were sent to you, and I believe you have copies of. And if you want to refer to those documents, you can see on sheet P3 of those documents.
We, we're not in possession of that document.
We have no documents.
I'd say, well, I'm more than happy to share the one small copy I have with me, and there's another copy here.
Yvonne's got some, looks like.
I know we brought down five sets on Friday.
Yeah, I'll take a look.
The sign, it's at the top of the building. That's, that's a photograph, actually, of what it looks like currently. It's the sign we're proposing after we're awning it and new doors on the fourth floor.
So the, the original is painted on the brick. Is this painted on, or is this an actual sign? Okay.
This one is considered a danger than this one in terms of square footage. But this one is above the awning, as opposed to, it's much less deep than what it's there now.
And we're seeing this from the river, correct?
You're seeing that floating in the blue and over the river.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. And it's not lighted?
And we do propose that it be lighted?
What kind of lights we're talking about?
We haven't been able to find a determination. We'd like to lighten it from behind the letters. But we could certainly lighten it with some sort of a, actually, I'm sorry.
Don't we have rules about lights?
We did not, I take that back, because that was an original option, and we chose to lighten from the top of the parapet or, or apply light at the top of the wall.
Although, letters are not lighted.
Not from behind.
So like, goose snatcher, or whatever.
So lights hanging from the actual building?
We are open to either that or to lighting from this parapet wall here, which is a high parapet wall. It's like just a sign from here. But you need to place the source of the light. See the source of the light from the wall.
Okay. So this, okay, so this is where it's going, right here, I see.
That's right.
All right.
Just pull up on the screen, so you guys can see.
Oh, thanks, 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 thanks.
So this is not the one we're looking at, the sign is up here. And I think you can scan to the other side.
Yeah, go to the right or the left, Ange.
There we go. Yeah, so this is the existing building with the sign, the new sign would be above that, and this is the other one.
So you're going to add on, how high, how, how much height is that, Brown's Brewing Company, the new one? Do you have any?
The exact mentions of the sign, I don't have, I don't believe it's noted here, but the overall square footage is very close to 60 square feet, a rectangle around the thing. I think it's about two and a half.
And that's replacing the one that's painted?
Yes, because we're, we're.
I know, I get it, because you're, yeah.
The doors would be right through the middle.
Right where the Browns are, right.
So where the sign is painted on the building are going to be doors and windows, and the sign is going to be on letters along the rooftop?
Well, at the top, at the top of this wall.
At the top of the wall, but not on top of the roof?
No, no, it would be against the wall.
Got it.
Okay. And the light, the letters are not lit?
I know they're not.
We'll verify that.
The letters aren't lit, but they're going to be lit.
There's going to be some.
Exterior, exterior, some type of exterior.
It'll be an applied light.
Right.
This parapet wall is high, you can put a light on that wall and shine it across, or you can use an expedition either way. I believe documents.
I like it.
I like the construction, too.
If you go that route, that's perfect.
Ask if there are any questions.
Any questions from anybody on the audience, or, or online? Anybody online?
No.
No?
So you could.
We have a seeker, yes.
And it's not just the sign, it's the.
All right, that's a sec, that's a sec.
Well, there's a couple of different ones, right?
Yeah, I think this one should be considered separately.
I would say.
So there's an unlisted seeker with that, right?
Um, yeah, there is a seeker. It's unlisted.
The sign?
Um, yeah, it's, it's. So will the, will the lighting be like all hours or certain hours that the sign will be lit?
I defer to Gary. Everything we light now is in the evening hours.
Oh, not during the day or not, but all night long?
No, during hours of operations, so I would say this time of year from 4:30 to midnight, yeah.
Oh.
That's how we handle our current timing.
I think that's reasonable.
So it's, we said it was unlisted.
So you will have to do a seeker.
We don't.
You do, you do, but you can, you know, make your own declaration. You don't have to, you do not have to declare yourselves lead agency. It's an unlisted action.
But would it be one motion for both variance requests?
No.
No, no, we'll do it separately.
Take them separate.
Oh, so each one, oh, all right.
We'll do separate for both.
Oh, you're waiting for me on it?
Yes.
Oh, okay, all right. I didn't know we were going to do that right now.
All eyes on you.
All right, um, Mr. Chairperson, in regards to PLZBA 2025-0057, with regards to the sign and lighting variance request. And as supported by the staff reports, I asked the board that this proposal be an unlisted seeker action with sufficient information available for a negative declaration.
Second that motion. All in favor?
All in favor?
Aye.
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 Yeah, we can.
All right, so the building frontage variance, do we need to have?
So, so why don't you vote on this variance first?
Oh, okay, I vote to approve.
No, someone has to, someone has to make a motion.
Oh, I'm sorry.
We vote on this sign only right now?
Well, someone's got to bring the motion.
Correct.
Yeah, well, so.
Everyone's looking at you.
Oh, oh, okay. All right. So I move that the board approve the variance, the area variance, based on, the variance will not create an unreasonable change in the character of the neighborhood or be a detriment to nearby properties if it is granted. It's still on the same wall, and lighting, it will be the similar timing. The benefits sought by the applicant may not be achieved by some feasible method other than the proposed variance, again, because it's on the same wall. Three, the.
You don't leave them all.
All right, well, if that's sufficient.
I'll second that motion.
I vote to approve.
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 Approve. So that's for item one.
Item one.
I don't choose something different. Perhaps you could look at the same elevation of the building, lower part access. For those of you who are familiar with building, notice there is a steel and concrete deck across this part of the building. We are going to be replacing that with a new, slightly larger deck that will extend not just from this corner, but will include this slightly higher portion here. Will go from, extend into the right of way. And right of way, in that, in that right of way, you need to have 16-foot clearance by 16 feet clear underneath the deck by the ordinance. We propose to have not quite that height meter case. This deck is going to replace the existing deck and will be at the same height as the existing deck, which is at first floor elevation, so that it is accessible to the people who are eating in the first floor or coming from, from the first floor coming out of the deck. This deck is higher so that we can use the doors below that deck, existing doors below that deck, as a delivery, a place for deliveries, so that the delivery truck can move into that space. When we can look at a plant at this moment, it makes it clearer. So a truck can pull underneath this, having a panel truck, can pull apart, it's a small ass truck, and go in and deliver food to the restaurant, et cetera. So it's, both of these are below the 16 feet. We have an 11 foot 10 clearance on this one, a seven foot seven clearance on the existing one, or the one that's replacing the existing one. So we're looking for relief of five foot one here and eight foot five here.
So to be clear, the, the eight foot five clearance one, the one on the right, is actually, the size already exists. Is that correct?
I would say that it exists within a few inches of that.
Okay.
The structure may be two inches deep or shallower, just based upon our structural engineers' analysis of efficient deck structure. Yes, it's the finished deck, the floor of the deck will be at the same elevation.
Give, give or take, it's the same, okay.
And the higher one, the stair that goes up, the index.
Now, in your application form, I didn't see it referred to, but in your short environmental assessment form, you referred to an elevator.
There's, there is a lot of work that's being done that is not, there's no variance, we're not requesting variance for. In the future, there will be an elevator in the building. In the future, there's four phases of construction, as we see it now. The first phase being decks, and the decks are what we're asking for variance on. This piece of structure here will be the new entrance, which will allow going off the deck into the restaurant, access, access all of the elevations within. Behind that is a new elevator proposed.
So that's down the road and not part of the variance request now?
It will never require a variance.
Oh, okay, because it was referred to again in the, in an attached form, so I thought it might be.
Right, of course, a lot of these forms are written for the planning board.
Oh, okay.
They, they reviewed all of the phases of this.
They reviewed all of this, the planning board?
The only variance we're requesting to cover the height of that and, of course, the sign.
Thank you for the clarification.
Is it just those two? Is there one more? Is it just those two?
The two decks or the two variants?
No, those, there's just the two variances, right? Yeah, 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 this is for the 421 to 425. Okay. All right, do we do a seeker for that?
Chair, I have a couple of questions, if you don't, may I ask? Okay. So my understanding is that one of the reasons for the 16-foot requirement is to allow access to utility lines in the event public utilities needs to gain access to a public line. Do you have a utility map of the area underneath the proposed?
The Bella engineers has come out and surveyed all of the utility lines below. There is no public utility line running below that deck. There's one that is about five meters out from the corner of that deck and goes diagonally from near the building to the north and out to a manhole.
Is that a water or sewer line, do you know? It's a sewer line, and that does not run under, underneath any portion of the deck?
It does not run under any portion. And again, some of the documents you see may address this and some may not. We have also moved the two columns that were closest to it back about five feet, so that there's about 10 feet of knife between the closest column and the utility line, just in case it's off.
Okay. So I know that behind some of the buildings on River Street, maybe not this far north, there's a 20-inch water main. Do you have any indication?
There is no water main under this, and I don't know where that is.
Water main is in the front of River Street.
It's on River Street at that point? Okay, it could well be. It gets, it gets down to Front Street as you go farther south, okay.
All our, our water, incoming water comes from River Street.
Okay. That may be a different vein.
Not the ones that we provided before, I was collecting one with you today, and just to clarify, part of that survey. Yeah, yeah, so you can see, if you want to see exactly where that is.
I would.
Here, take that word over, Rick.
And you don't have that project.
Planning doesn't have this.
No, it's, oh, planning does have this, I believe, but only in the last few days. So if you look again, this is the orientation, rivers here, and the deck, post deck, this, we're not showing the post deck, but this is the doc, this is the sewer line that we're dealing with. And I think if we look at our site plan, the sewer line is, this was just outside, and this was done before this. So it is actually a little further out than that, than the show here, and that column is 5 feet, but it is not under the deck.
Okay.
I'm going to find you with documentation that's more coordinated than I brought.
Okay.
I didn't expect to address that.
We did have a site meeting with DPW, and they had diagonal.
DPW or DPU?
DPU, right here. And they were, they were in agreement with.
Okay, all right then. I have, I have no more questions.
Any questions from anyone out in the audience?
Oh, I, wait, I do have one more, I'm sorry, I apologize. My understanding is you have an easement from the city with respect to the, the decks going into the right of way? Something like that. Have you provided that to the, to staff?
Yes.
Did, okay, all right, good. When did you do that, just?
Probably been a month or so now.
Okay. It, it's not just a survey with a reference, it's the actual easement itself?
Yes.
All right, okay, I just haven't had a chance to review it, okay, all right.
Is there anybody online tonight?
No, no.
Um, shall I proceed with a seeker, all right?
For an unlisted action.
Mr. Chairperson, in regard to PLZBA 2025-0057, specifically with regards to the second variation, variance request involving the building frontage encroachment, encroachment request. As supported by the staff reports, I ask that the board find this proposal to be an unlisted seeker action with sufficient information available for a negative declaration.
I would second that motion.
Um, I, I vote to approve.
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 Okay, so it's a negative, Nate, you approved a Nate deck, right?
Yes.
Yes.
Like deck on the deck.
Negdeck, negative declaration.
All right, and I'll make a motion to approve PLZBA 2025-0057 in regards to 421, 425 River Street decks that are to be constructed that don't meet a height requirement. That we approve this variance. I believe it will not create an undesirable change in the character of the neighborhood or the building or the properties nearby. And I believe the variance, at least on one side, is not substantial because it already exists as such. And I don't think it will have an adverse effect or impact on the environmental conditions of the neighborhood.
I would second that.
I vote to approve.
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 Thank you very much.
Okay.
Have a good night.
Thank you. And I keep that for.
So this, this was.
This was for the variance, okay? The height variance, which means it's a lot of the business I've been covering now by actual report. You still have to look at that.
It's okay, I'm sure it is, but I just. Okay, just, all right, okay.
Okay, next on this, next on the doc, it is PLZBA 2025-0059, 5860 Second Street. Is there someone here?
No, I don't hear.
Putting here to speak.
Is there anybody here that would like to speak for them, or?
No.
Or against?
They're not here.
Anybody online?
No. I think you should go to the next item.
Do we just table it?
We just table it, record.
Someone who's come before us before.
I don't, I don't know why you're here.
So this is a, I think the homeowner would be here, or Neil would.
Yeah, that's what I'm saying, Neil's come before us before.
I would just table it, table it for now, and if they show up, maybe we could just re, restate it.
Yeah.
If they don't show up, we're, we're no action.
Okay. All right, next is PLZBA 2025-0060, 3004 Sixth Avenue. Oh, Neil, there's Neil.
Who's this working in?
This is 58 and 60. No.
Is this Neil?
Yes, this is Neil.
Oh, we just tabled that.
Well, we didn't unless he's.
All right, so you just. You have to sit down and we'll call your case again, okay? Because he's in it, he's in it.
All right.
So 0060.
00, should we do that?
3004 Sixth Avenue, yes.
3004 Sixth Avenue, come up to the podium, please. Okay.
Okay. State your name and all that.
Name and address.
And addresses, yes.
Joyce Daniels.
Who is, can you speak into the microphone?
Joyce Daniels, 3006th Avenue. I'm right next to 3004.
Stephanie Floyd, 3006th Avenue, Troy.
Teen years in 3306th Avenue, I was a former head of the Neighborhood Association.
I'm here because, I'm here because I can't figure out how the city is going to let this man take a three-family house and make eight apartments out of it.
No, they're, they're, they're opposition to the, is the, is the applicant here?
No, he's not. And they're working in it every day.
Okay, continue.
They're working in this house every day. And they're trying to put, it's been dug out, it's been cleaned out and everything, and they're putting eight apartments in that three-family house. And the tree in the backyard is the main thing that needs to be cut down because it's all falling over in my yard now.
So you're saying that you are opposed to this?
I'm opposed to it, yes.
Okay.
Say why? Can you ask her?
Joyce, why are you, why are you opposed to it?
What is your opposition?
What's your opposition?
It's a three-family house, how are you going to make eight apartments in that one building?
And then, and there's no parking.
Parking facility there.
And when I met with the guy, when he first got the house, and, you know, he said he was gonna keep, you know, say do a three-family house, and all of a sudden, now it's going to be a seven unit or eight unit, and we're trying to figure out where all these people are coming from. Who are these people you're going to put in this building? There's no parking space. And that's our concern, because we've been on that lot forty, over forty-something years.
I've been there forty-four years.
We have somebody coming from downstate buying up all this property and turning around. Who's going to be our neighbors? We've lived here and so long that we've seen our fair share of stuff on 6th Avenue. So our concern is parking. What type of neighbors is he going to have there, the garbage? Because we've been here so long and.
We've never had this problem.
You know, this house has been on fire like three times.
I've lived there forty-four years. And that house has been on fire three times.
And now we got somebody coming, you know, want to put eight apartments or seven apartments. Like, how are you going to take a three-family house and make it in these apartments? How small are these apartments going to be, and who are our neighbors going to be? That's our concern, who are our neighbors going to be? And the parking that's going on, you know? And like I said, these people don't live here, they're coming here buying up property. And, you know, is there going to be a maintenance person? I said to him, we, our house is here, there's the gangway, his house is here. Can we have the code to the combination for the lock? If we need to get in between the gangway, if our maintenance guy needs to come, or if we were getting new windows on the first floor, we can't even get, we don't even have access to go in the gangway. We don't use the gangway, but if we needed to go in the gangway, we don't even have access. And that's our concern about parking, the neighbors, you know, different things, yes.
I have a question.
Yes.
Your concern of gangway access or the repair of your sidewall or windows or something to that extent?
That's one of the concerns, yes.
Yeah, no, one at a time.
Yes.
What was his response to that?
Well, when I asked them for either the combination or a key for the gangway, I said, we will not be using this gangway unless we had to for our maintenance. He said, okay, I'll give you the code, never gave me the code. I still have that text message from him where he never gave me the code.
How long ago did that take place?
This has been going on with him for now about a year.
Well, with that code, I think it was like during the summertime when I got it. I have it on my phone when I asked them for the code, maybe June.
Sometime June or July.
Yes.
And he said he would provide you with the code, but has not.
But he's never provided, and I've seen him a couple of times, and I've never asked him for it again because I figured he didn't want us to have the code, you know?
Well, that may or may not be a correct.
And he's had all these people come, these foreign people come, and when you ask, try to ask them a question about what's going on, the first thing comes out of their mouth is, I don't speak no English, you don't speak English, me don't speak English. So where do you go from there?
And then we, our, our other concern is the tree in the backyard. If there's a rainstorm, windstorm, and that tree falls, we're gonna get hit. And that's one of our concerns too, about this tree that really needs to be cut down. He's not cutting the tree down.
He's only worried about the inside.
The inside.
Have you filed a complaint or a notice with the City of Troy regarding?
I called the city, I've talked to the mayor about all of this stuff. I've talked to her about this stuff. And right now I'm fared up with it.
Please understand, this is all new to me, so I'm trying to take this piece by piece. The person who initiated a request for a variance, according to our report, is a Mr. Waldo.
Yeah, we know who he is.
Evora.
Evora. Is Mr. Evora here tonight?
No.
Is Mr. Evora online tonight?
No.
Was Mr. Evora notified that his variance was coming up tonight?
Yes.
Did he explain why he would not be here?
No, we didn't, he didn't get back to us, we sent him six. Our last communication with him didn't.
I'm sorry, I cannot.
He didn't reply to our last communication with him, so no, he didn't give a reason for no comment, no.
So he was notified?
Yeah, he knew he, he was on the agenda, so yeah. Wouldn't know why he's not here, so.
I have a lot of questions regarding this property. And I don't know who to address the questions to. Because with all due respect, I don't think you have the answers.
So typically, typically, if the applicant doesn't show, we usually defer action, at least for a reasonable time, and table the, table the motion.
At one time, we had, we had, I had Code come in because squatters was living in the building.
How long ago were squatters residing in this building?
Back last, last year.
Two thousand twenty four. And what did Code do when they?
Code came and they, they put a padlock on the house. And somebody broke in it again.
Did Code come back a second time?
They've been there, they even had the cops there and everything, they had Department of Utility was there, too. It's been going on now, this house, February would be three years that we've been going through this with this house.
I want to back the bus up for a minute, just to make sure that I really, truly understand the sequence of what's taken place. This building had a fire, as I understand it, approximately three years ago?
This coming February would be three years.
Okay. So February of two oh two three, there was a fire. From that point on, the building has not been occupied for residential purposes, correct?
It's, it's been through two other hands before this gentleman bought it.
Bear with me, ma'am, we're gonna get there.
Sorry.
How many times has this building turned over in terms of legal ownership since the time of the fire, February of twenty three?
I'm quite sure it's three.
The owner, she told it, somebody, they flipped it, I'm thinking either two or three times.
So at least twice, maybe three.
Maybe three, yes.
And during this period, from the fire forward, there's been no attempt to rehabilitate or remediate the fire damaged building and make it habitable?
Well, what happened was when he initially bought the building, he had a dumpster, they cleaned out part of it, and then for like months, nobody did nothing with the house. They cleaned out some of the stuff and then, no show, no show, no show, and then all of a sudden now, he's back and he, you know, cleaning it out and doing what he needs to do.
Now, when you say he, are you talking about Mr. Evora?
Yes.
The owner, yes.
And then you had the issue of squatters?
There was squatters.
In the interim?
Yes.
And Code was notified of that issue? And they were back a second time with the police?
I talked with Jim Lance. He took care of that.
Who did?
Jim, I think it's last name.
Jim Lance.
Oh, Jim Lance and Code, okay. I hear your concerns loud and clear.
And, and I would, I would add that if this gets tabled, which I think it will be, I would encourage you to come to the next meeting.
I have a, a question with regards to that, the code for the gangway. Did you have access before he put in whatever lock, code lock? Did you have access to that gangway with prior owners for all forty years?
We needed to go between the gangway.
Right.
All we did was go to the neighbor's house and say, hey, we need to go to the gangway because they had a door and they would have a lock on it. Can you open up the door, you know, nine oh was coming to read our letters or something? And there was no problem.
But that, that was, oh, like almost forty years or forty plus years that you had that understanding or access for that purpose?
For a while, there was not even a door there.
Right, there wasn't a door there for a while.
Then the people that, after that, put a door there. Because a lot of times I would have trouble with my cable or something, and all I had to do was go over and ask them today, you know?
Thank you.
Does anybody on the board have any other questions, or do you ladies have anything else that you feel? Would you please take the microphone?
I was the former head of the Neighborhood Association for North Central.
Can you provide your name?
Pardon me, I already did, but it's Tina Yurson, thirty three hundred Sixth Avenue. I headed up the Neighborhood Association probably for twenty, twenty-five years before we combined with all of Lansingburg, and now it's at Boys Club with Kimmy Pearson. But we had a lot of problems with the houses being bought by absentee landlords mainly in New York, and we had a lot of complaints. And under the Tungin administration, Tim Matice would come to our meetings. And they had decided that that time, they told us, and I think it's part of the ordinances now, that they wouldn't allow the breaking down of these houses anymore to three, four, six, eight apartments or whatever. And Harry Tungin said to us, and furthermore, if it passes over into someone else's hands, we're gonna require them to bring it back to what the house was originally, to de-densify the area. That was what they wanted to do, de-densify it. Because you'd have one or two people living in each apartment, and our street's being set up in the horse and buggy days, there's two spots out in front because the buildings are all right next to each other without lawns in between or whatever. And it was turning into a social nightmare of who parked who, who parked where, especially in the winter when there was snow and the plowing and people would pile up the snow piles. It, it was, it was a nightmare, and it was a complaint at every single one of our, our meetings. So they decided they weren't gonna allow it anymore, and that would help de-densify the area and, and kind of soothe over the social nightmares. We lost garbage cans, you gotta have one for each apartment, you know? And if there was no gangways in between, they'd all go out in front. And prior to the city providing the garbage cans, God knows, it was usually plastic bags thrown out in front well before garbage day. The dogs would get to them, the cats would get to them, the pigeons would get to them. It was a disgusting mess. So they changed that for us. So when Joyce and Stephanie called me and told me about this, I said, well, that's not supposed to happen anymore. So that's why I came down with them to advocate for them. If there's gonna be eight apartments in there, and they told me that he's digging out the basement, it's already been dug out, all right? I don't know if that's gonna destabilize the building from being dug down so much to put two more apartments in there. If you only get one person in each one, that's eight people. If you get a guy and a girl living together, well, it's more. Where are we putting all these cars? All right, for her, it's gonna bring down the property values, which is what was happening all through North Central and Lansingburg. We really need somebody to act on this and to uphold what went on through the Tungin administration to help this. So, so it, it could really be a social nightmare, especially with all those people in there, who's gonna fight with who? Who comes in too late? Who blasts their music? Who gets the backyard? Who gets the parking spots out in front? I can see a lot of police action up there, is what we had before.
Suffice it to say, one of, one of your concerns is you have a three unit building that they're proposing seven units in.
Possibly eight, according to what the new owner told them, or these, these people from Mexico that were doing all the work.
I think there are an awful lot of questions, and if I could direct this to the corporate, Corporation Council. I think this should be tabled to our next meeting. And I've got a lot of questions that I would like to ask Mr. Evora. And I've heard your concerns, so that's where I'm at, at this moment in time.
That is the prerogative of the board, especially since the applicant is not here. So.
I have, I have a question, too, what if he doesn't show up the next time?
Then you can dismiss the application.
We can dismiss it. All right.
Will he be allowed to do any further work in between now and the next meeting?
This, this board doesn't deal with his permits, okay? He's, he's applied for a variance so that he can put more units in this, in this building, less than seven hundred square feet, that's all. So you can talk to building permits or Code about that question.
Has that already been approved, or did he just apply and go ahead with it?
Like I said, we're just dealing with the variance question here.
Okay.
We're not dealing with the building permit question, okay?
All right.
Do we have to table, or could we vote?
Do you have any other concerns you want to bring up while we're here? Stephanie, any other concerns? Yep.
I'm gonna make the motion that the board tables this until our next meeting in January.
I second the motion. Uh, approve the motion to table this.
I'm staying from voting because I wasn't here for the whole conversation.
Approved to table. And I would encourage you to come back for round two.
Yes, okay, and they'll get notice, right?
I approve, and did what he just said.
Okay.
I approve, and you can bring more.
Okay. She didn't get her notice until just a couple of days before.
It's the first, it's January.
It's the first Wednesday night in January at five thirty.
Okay.
If you wait a second, we'll.
Could I ask one more question?
Yeah.
What's the policy now of something like that, that's gonna go on in our neighborhoods when they apply for? I've lived in the city my whole life, we always got notice on.
The next meeting is January seventh.
January seventh, next meeting.
It's January seventh, okay. Do, they don't send out notices anymore to let the neighbors in the immediate area to know that something like this is being applied for?
We send out notices.
They should.
She didn't get any.
I just got this Friday.
What is that?
Did you get by mail?
Yeah.
What does the?
For this meeting, but not when he originally applied.
That is the, this is the first time he applied.
What is the date on the letter? What does the letter say?
It says, all in Board of Appeals, notice of special meeting, there is no, no date on, a date on there.
Can you bring it, can you bring it forward?
What about the envelope?
No, I don't think that's.
See if there's a postmark date on the envelope.
It's not did here.
I was just saying, yeah, today, but I thought he would admit that, you know, when was this letter dated?
The postmark, the postmark is November twenty first.
So the postmark, it was mailed November twenty first to notify you of a date of December third, that would be the meeting.
So we know that the next meeting's the seventh.
January seventh.
January seventh.
Five thirty, we here.
Yes.
Tell your neighbors.
Yeah, bring anybody.
I would encourage you to call a couple of days before the meeting, ask for zoning.
Okay.
And verify that it will be on the agenda.
Okay.
And it's a public forum, so feel free to do what you gotta do.
Bring a friend. You also can check the Troy website.
Okay.
We're done, we're good?
Yes, good, thank you, thanks for coming.
Thank you for the attention. Appreciate it.
Hey, trust.
Do you want to go backwards?
Let's go back, should we go back for a deal?
It's up to your choice.
Let's accommodate him.
So oh five nine.
Do you want to do another?
Angie, can you make, can you make a note with Zach King?
Yeah.
Zero five nine.
Tim, if you gotta go.
No, okay.
PLZBA two zero two five zero zero five nine fifty eight sixty Second Street. Please approach the podium.
There's nobody on line.
No.
Hi, my name's Neil Plone, I'm working with the owners of sixty Second Street. I would like to use the building as a single family residence, which is not allowed in the zone that they're in.
Aren't, aren't they two buildings?
Uh, the property line has been dissolved, okay, so this is where it gets a little weird. It was supposedly this, this building was built as a pair by some business person for their nieces to live in. The, there was a fire, somebody else added across the top. And there's holes in between, interconnecting the buildings. Usually you have a brick masonry party wall between your row houses, right?
But there was, but there was a property line until your client purchased the pair of properties, right?
It was, yes.
So the, there was two lots, and they were treated as two buildings historically.
It depends how far back you go. They're, they're built together.
Within, within the, the memory of man runs not to the contrary.
Look, from, from, from the exterior, they look like two separate buildings, but they're built, the top, the attic is connected, the party wall is not constructed how you would normally expect, and there, there were holes in between connecting the buildings. Usually what we see is a, how, a row house, masonry row house. We are not asking to take two row houses that were not connected and punch through a masonry wall. There is holes in that wall, that wall is built out of wood, which is sagging, collapsing, which is how this all got started. So the owners were, were hoping to just be in sixty. They found out the structural problems, the neighbor didn't want to invest, they sold the property to my clients, my clients dissolved the property line. And when we went to go for a permit to fix the failing party wall, they sent us here because a single family house is not a permitted use.
Just curiously, is there one section block a lot now, or is there still two? I have two. The, the tax number, I did, I, I support material.
That might be above my pay grade, but they're, they're combined, is my understanding, like it's.
So they probably, I think what he's saying is they've been merged.
Is.
At, at the owners, at the current owners' request.
Yes, yes.
Make it real simple for me. You have two buildings that are really one. Because there's no solid firewall that separates the two buildings.
That is the pitch that I'm making.
That's what I'm hearing.
So for example, let's say we, for whatever reason, we are required to separate these two buildings properly. We've gotta do major, or doing major. We've got to do major, or doing major structural anyway. The owners want this to be their forever home. They don't want to chop it up into eight units. They want, their extended family want to move the previous generation in with them, possibly do a residential elevator. And these buildings were constructed as single-family residences regardless of the zoning, right? So that's our pitch. It's not like they, if we did nothing, we've got a big problem. They're not two buildings. So we want to use what looks like two buildings already connected.
But they have two separate numbers, 58.
They had two separate addresses, and they had two separate, there was a property line, a shared party wall with passageways through it.
Is it on one deed?
I don't know. They had to buy it from somebody else. They had to buy 58, the one to the north, from somebody.
So they.
So it's one tax math parcel. Whether it's one deed or not depends upon what the owners.
Yeah.
Steve, it's one tax math parcel, depending upon whether it's on one deed or not depends upon what the owners did when they purchased the second property.
Who is the owner?
So Michael and Vicki Gardner.
All right. Do Michael and Vicki Gardner own both buildings or both structures?
Yes.
And what they want to do is simply to create it as a residence.
Yes.
And they have no intention of subdividing it or creating other units within it?
Correct. That would be permitted.
I'm on your side. I think this is.
So they want to make, essentially what your argument is, if I get it correctly, is that they want to make what you view as a two-family structure into a one-family. You're saying it's one structure.
Well, I'm saying that that's part of the pitch. It is set up as, right? So it, you know, it looks, it was designed to look like two different, as two entrances, two stairs.
Do the floors match?
Yes. There's some additions on the back that were done at later dates that don't match.
To go from one to the other, if you're inside, do you go through a doorway or an open arch or what?
Yeah, there's doorways here that were plugged up because they were not, there were two different families, right? Like there was a single family living in the north, single family living in the south. Different owners, property line went right through. It looks like there should be a masonry wall that goes through to separate these things. Not only that, it's made out of wood and they filled it with brick, and it's sinking.
Got it.
So.
From here, you go to the building department.
So well, we started with the building department, and they actually let us do some of, because engineers threw them out, because I mean, it's not going to collapse, but don't be in here.
They want the variance before they explain.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Thank you.
I'm good.
I'm good.
Is there any more questions from the board?
No.
How about from the audience? Any questions out there or anybody online?
Would you like me to make a motion? Oh, we got to do your secret.
Ready?
Yep.
Well, I want Richard to be, he's involved.
Oh, yeah, okay. They have to do, they have to go through each criteria if it's a used variance, yeah, not for an area.
Are we looking for your area or?
It's a used variance, because it's a, I guess it's a multi-family zone.
Yeah, it's a high-density zone, so things like colleges are permitted. We're not going to generate a performance run in a college. Like the list is, it's kind of crazy to ask us to do every single one.
Do you want to go through the factors and say why the board should grant a used variance in this case?
Here's the factors. Here you go. Do you want them? You got them?
Yeah, I've got.
No, you can read, and then you will see why.
Okay, I can read them.
Yeah.
He's still pitching.
Are we still?
He's still pitching. Yeah, yeah.
I don't know.
Rick's making him pitch.
If you guys are good, I'm good.
I'm good.
We did include, okay.
I think we should do, I make a motion that we do the secret.
Rick is asking him to go through.
I asked him to go through, I mean, you should. I'm not the board, I'm sorry. I don't have to do that, okay? I'm suggesting that the applicant justify to the board why a used variance should be granted. There are five factors.
Go for it.
We'll go for all the facts first, and then we'll do the motions after.
You'd like me to talk, or do you?
Go for it.
All right, so demonstrate to the Board of Zoning Appeals that for every use permitted by the zoning code under the regulations for the, okay. What we provided was an example of what we would expect a normal, like one of our other clients, who is a developer, to purchase these properties to chop it up into units, right? So the math that we used were the purchase prices, the estimates, the real, we have a contract with Dunkin' Kale for the structural repairs, a reasonable estimate for a per-unit fit-up for eight units, the fire rating separations that would need to be created, since this is an open, it's a sink, it's like, you guys know, it's wide open. The sprinklers, we're probably going to have to do some sprinklers under residential code anyway, but this is like a commercial offset. And also there was asbestos in the basement. So what this was adding up to is millions of dollars that divided over the per-unit and per-square-foot cost that we use for other projects to do, to do this kind of thing. It was coming up to being about 30% or more before we even got specific per-unit to build, meaning this is a bad project for a developer. So if you were to hypothetically say this zone really wants these buildings chopped up and jammed full of units, you'd have my developer client in here asking to do 16 units because of this math.
It cannot provide a reasonable return for what, to make it into multiple units, which is why you want to make it into a single unit.
Right, it's almost backwards from what you usually hear. And again, because my clients are adamant, they want a beautiful Troy house, and they want a.
All right, let's go to the next one.
Read it.
The hardship relating to this property is, and you're going to qualify this, is unique when compared to similar properties and does not apply to a substantial portion of the neighborhood.
So that was part of my technical pitch. The building's already connected, so that's why I was hammering that earlier.
Okay.
To answer that question.
Yep, no, we get it. So if granted, it will not alter the essential character of the neighborhood.
Is that self-explanatory?
Yes, yes. And the alleged hardship is not self-created.
So that one, I guess it could be a little trickier, but they bought the property before any, knowing any of the structural work had to be done. And I could hypothesize, just knowing them, if 58 was not for sale and there were no structural problems, they would be living as a single-family residence in just 60, which is a not-compliant use, right? So they bought, they bought the building from a single family to be used as a single family. But as soon as you apply for a permit to do anything, we're going to end up here.
They did not know the financial extent.
That is correct.
Got it.
One more?
No, that's it. There's only four. Four for use.
Only four for use, I'm sorry.
I'd like to move forward if.
I'm ready, if you're ready for seeker. Okay. Mr. Chairperson, in regard to PLZBA 2025-0059, as supported by the staff reports, I ask that the board find this proposal to be an unlisted seeker action with sufficient information available for a negative declaration.
I'll second.
Approve.
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 Wait, we got one more.
And then I'd like to make the motion that the board approve the variance, PLZBA 2025-0059, to merge 58 and 62nd Street into a single-family home. Listening to Neil, the owners are unable to provide a reasonable return unless this variance is approved. The hardship relating to this property is unique when compared to similar properties. Requested variance, if granted, will not alter the essential character of the neighborhood, and I believe that it was not self-created.
I would second that motion.
My vote to approve.
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 Thanks. Thank you, everyone, and thank you for your leniency with the time. My staff had it right. It's on the agenda correct.
Have a good night.
Have a good presentation. Have a good night.
Adam is going to be the next. PLZBA 2025-0061, 1467 Fifth Avenue.
Hi, I'm Adam Lobt, and I live at 1508 Sauce Avenue.
You live where?
1508 Sauce Avenue, Saucy South. We just want to paint the name of our business and a little bit more on the outside of our building. I don't know if you have the photos we submitted. We submitted a mock-up. Yeah, there it is. So it's a little bit bigger than, I don't know if you have the front face of the building over the front door. Yeah, so that's the name of our business. We want to.
The name of the business is?
Is Y E S F O, okay, yeah. And, yeah, we're not going to build a physical sign that protrudes from the building. We're just going to paint right on the white cinder block, so it's pretty unobtrusive and simple. And that's what we're asking to do.
So wait a minute, I see, I see the Howdy, where's the other one? There's two, right?
So Howdy's like on the side above the free food fridge that we have there. Yep, to the, right there, yeah, that's.
But then you've got the other.
So then that's the name of the business that goes above the front door. So there should be another page with the front of the building mock-up. There it is.
Yeah, sorry.
On another side.
And then, I don't know if you see, yeah, so that's the one that you're passing around right now. That's the front of the building. But the rules around signage seem to be more tailored to like a physical sign that protrudes from the building. So the rules around square footage and whatnot were pretty limited, because you obviously don't want a billboard sticking out of the side of a building. We're not building anything, we're just going to paint right on it, is what we're proposing.
Can I just ask you some questions?
Yeah.
What kind of business is it?
We're a kombucha brewery. We make kombucha. Yeah.
What is kombucha?
Kombucha is a fermented tea that's probiotic. It's like, think of it like a healthy soda. And we have a tasting room, we're open to the public on the weekend. We actually, the mayor came and presented us with the Little Italy's Best Rehab Award last year.
So there's no alcohol licensing, no state liquor authority?
We are also approved with the City of Troy and with the TTB, the federal licensing arm, to start a cidery, which we're also working on. We're just, the last step is the state liquor authority, which they're just, they're backlogged like 18 months or something.
Does a cidery equate to a public bar where alcohol is served with what we would think of as a commercial bar?
Yes and no. We're going to have a tasting room, but it's a farm cidery license, is the type of cidery license that we're going for, so.
But you're not talking about vodka, gin, bourbon?
No, we're just making, we would be making hard cider using all New York State apples. Yeah, that's what.
So the two signs, one would be over the front door, and the other would be on the parking lot side?
Yeah, above the free food fridge that we put there. And then we were just going to paint.
Twice, it went down twice.
And then we were just going to paint like our little sort of face logo on the sign.
One of the drawings has a person's face or a silhouette on the left.
Yeah, it's like kind of one of our logos, just a face.
But that's not a sign.
I guess it's open to interpretation, yeah. We asked if we were more under, like, is this more of a mural, or is it more of a sign? I was told that if any component of anything that we were planning on doing had the name of the business, that it was considered a sign. I first reached out to the building department. They said, this isn't really our problem unless you're building a sign. And so then they said, you should just talk to zoning. Who the first response from zoning was, you should talk to building. And then in the end, it was determined that we should do this, so that's why I'm here.
Any reason why you're not using what I'd call traditional block letters as opposed to the way you've got it artistically illustrated?
My wife's an artist, and everything about our space is artistically done. I mean, the colors inside and the free food fridge, the color of the door, all of that. We try to make things pretty. I don't really know of any business that only does, like block, like Times New Roman is their sign.
Do you own the building, lease it or rent it?
Own it.
How long ago did you buy it?
We bought it in 2021. Ended up being in much worse shape than we had anticipated, so it took a couple of years. Finelli, the Finelli Brothers, Finelli Construction, did the work for us, which was cool, because they actually used to get steel fabricated by Sam Bizarro, who built that building originally. So there's a lot of history in the building. Quite a few of the contractors that worked on it had been there when it was a steel fabrication business. I'm on great terms with Sam Bizarro's son, Pete, who also loves that we like brought the building back and revitalized it. We just didn't have the band, it ended up being such a big project that we didn't have the bandwidth in the midst of it all to worry about signs. We were worried about the floor and the heating system.
I looked in the windows, it looks nice.
Yeah, we did our best.
You've done a decent job bringing that building back.
It's really the contractors that we worked with.
It needs to be brought back.
Yeah, it's really the craftspeople. I mean.
Kudos to you guys.
Thank you. I could wax poetic about Chuck, our mason, who did the steel, the glass block windows and the rehabbing the front. You can't even tell that the amount of rehab that needed to be done to the block. He did a really, really nice job. All the artisans, the, you know, the tradesmen that worked on the building did a really good job, so. We just finally are like, people keep saying, hey, I didn't even realize you guys were here. It's like, well, it's because we don't have a sign, so we should probably take care of that.
Do you own the former scrapyard?
Scrapyard? You mean the lot? Oh, yeah, the yard is part of the property, yeah. So we've got, we just took all the tables and chairs in actually recently, and yeah, we've got a.
Use that more for parking or for outdoor table and chairs?
In the winter, we use it for parking. We're only open on the weekend. I mean, we use it for ourselves for parking all the time.
Well, sure.
In the summer, you know, I have a five-year-old son, we've got a lot of people in the community and in the neighborhood with kids. We like to keep the gate closed and let kids run around and have their scooters and stuff, and have it be a safe place for them, so we encourage people to not park in there during that time of the year. But during the winter, we, I mean, I was out there till late last night clearing the snow and making sure that it's safe, and so that way people have a place to park that's not slippery.
Did you say you were only open on weekends?
Yes, we're open on Saturday and Sunday. We're there during the week doing production, so it could be kind of noisy when we're brewing and whatnot, canning, so we're open on the weekends, yeah. it could be kind of noisy when we're brewing and whatnot, canning, so we're open on the weekends, yeah.
You ready to move forward?
I don't have any more questions.
I know.
So a seeker that, Evie?
All right. Yes, ready? Uh, Mr. Chairperson, in regard to PLZBA twenty twenty five dash zero zero six one, as supported by the staff reports, I ask that the board find this proposal to be an unlisted seeker action with sufficient information available for a negative declaration.
I'll second.
Uh, I I approve.
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 I I move forward that the board approve the variance for PL, PLZBA two zero two five zero zero six one. Uh, the variance will not create an undesirable change in the character of the neighborhood or be a deterrent for two nearby properties if this is granted, fits in with the neighborhood. It's rehabbing all a building that, in an area that needs to be have that rehab. The benefit sought by the application may not be achieved by some feasible method other than the proposed variance. If you were to put a sign, that would be a whole nother process for you. I think that we only needed one, yes.
Yeah, I'll second that motion.
I vote to approve.
Approve.
I'm a traditionalist when it comes to letters, but I'll approve.
I got Steve.
Approved.
I approve and I congratulate you for doing good things to the community.
Thank you.
Yes, good luck.
All right, I'm going to.
Are we done?
No, there's one more.
Unity House, right? So it's.
The never-ending store.
PLZBA.
Have a good time at your party.
Yeah. We did good.
Thanks for hanging in there, yeah.
Good night, Kelly.
Good night.
PLZBA two zero two five zero zero six two. It's Unity, Unity House.
Good evening, my name is Greg O'Connor with Architecture Plus on behalf of Unity House. I happy to share my screen if it's easier, the documents or if you want to pull up.
Oh, yeah, I can play, if you have the same, yeah.
Yeah.
Could you speak into the mic, please?
Yes, thank you. Yes, if you went to the elevation, it might be easiest to explain the project. Thank you. One on the bottom left. So we're seeking a variance for the, from the fifty percent transparency requirement for non-residential uses. This this project's a teaching kitchen. This originally was approved through planning. When we got into demolition, we found that the existing building was beyond salvage. Structural engineer came in and basically evaluated and we decided to proceed with knocking it down and going back to planning with a new building. So we are looking for variance for the ground floor, street level, fifty percent transparency requirement. We don't feel it negatively affects the the neighborhood. I mean, we are proposing roughly a twenty one percent transparency with the two windows and the door in lieu of the fifty percent. Share my screen. Think I might just need to.
One second, I I think somebody's telling me my meeting may have been muted, so I want to make sure. Who is Greg that from?
That's me.
Oh, oh, okay. Yeah, he said, this is not muted. No, but Eric is telling me the meeting is muted, that's what I'm saying. It's, this is not muted, is this muted? This is not muted. So why is it, yeah, so why is it showing? Oh, he's looking at here.
Hey Greg, I just have a question for you.
Sure.
Issue is the twenty percent ground floor transparency. Is that because it's just going to be two windows?
Just because it's, the fifty percent creates a condition where it's structurally difficult to brace the building.
Okay.
This small part here across that elevation is only eighteen feet. And so we try to make those windows as big as possible. They're roughly three and a half by six foot eight on the first floor. And then the door is eight foot to just increase a little more glass on it.
Just curious, that's all.
But that's essentially it, though. Happy to, I want to answer any questions.
I don't have any questions.
Counsel, is there any questions or?
What was, I I guess what was the design reason for having two windows sort of offset to the right as opposed to putting in three windows on the ground floor?
So go to the site plan. We're trying to make a little recessed area here to have a wheelchair turning radius. We pushed that back. So it it was just symmetry within that section of the building and structural reasons. The ground floor is also a lot closer to the street in this redesign. So having windows directly against grocery was kind of undesirable.
Any other questions from the board?
I don't have any questions.
Not for the applicant. Question for Angelina?
Yes.
The agenda lists this as a type two seeker matter, but the staff report
It's.
List it as unlisted seeker.
It's unlisted. It's unlisted, it's unlisted. No, this is for, this is what I was confirming. This is for less than four thousand square feet. No, this is actually a type two action.
Yeah. I know what's going on.
It's type two, so.
So it isn't unlisted, okay, because it had both in the. Okay.
Okay, is that, it's.
Because it's less than four thousand.
Yes, it's on, it's on listen, it's type two because it's under four thousand square feet.
Okay, thank you.
So no seeker is required, you can just say it's like type two actions, yeah, yeah, you can.
If you're ready.
Yeah, we're ready.
Thank you for the clarification. Okay, Mr. Chairperson, in regard to PLZBA twenty twenty five dash zero zero six two, as supported by the staff reports, I ask that the board find this proposal to be a seeker type two action with sufficient information available upon which to state that no determination is necessary or required.
I second.
Uh, approve.
Approve.
I would approve.
Approved.
I move that the board approve the variance. The variance, if granted, will not have an adverse effect or impact on the physical or environmental conditions in the neighborhood or the district. And the alleged difficulty is not self-created because of the wheelchair access and that you don't want the windows at street level.
I would second that motion.
I vote to approve.
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 Thank you. Good night.
Have a good night.
Have a good night.
If there's nothing else to be brought up before the board this evening, I would entertain a motion to adjourn.
I would second that motion.
And I vote to approve that motion.
I also approve the motion.
Approve.
Approved. Work.
Hour and a half.
Happy holidays.
Yeah. I think we did well tonight.
Merry Christmas.